Fifth Matthews Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm John Higdon, I'm Mayor Pro Tem. Our mayor Paul Bailey is a personal commitment tonight and can't be here. I'd like to start with introductions. To my right and your left is our Public Information Officer Maureen Keith, Interim Planning Director Jay Camp, Town Clerk Lori Canapino, Commissioner Barbara DeMint, Commissioner John Urban, Commissioner Chris Query, Attorney Charlie Buckley, Town Manager Hazen Blodgett, Commissioner Chris Melton, Commissioner Jeff Miller, and Assistant Town Manager Becky Hawke. Going to continue with the mayor's tradition of having a safety minute. Please be careful if you stand up and go to the restroom or something, make sure you put whatever you have under your chair so nobody trips over it. There is a defibrillator out in the lobby to the right and stairs leading down to the parking lot in case there's a fire alarm or something like that. Going to start with an invocation I'm going to give it tonight. If you care, please join me in prayer, if you care to. Father, we gather together here tonight intent on addressing the work before us in a thoughtful and respectful manner. May we seek to represent fairly and well all stakeholders and citizens of Matthews. May our efforts be guided by understanding and wisdom and blessed with insight. May our faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters we address this evening. Bless those in El Paso, Texas and Dayton, Ohio as they deal with yet more senseless shootings. And we pray that this tragedy will move those that can to take substantive action to help reduce gun violence. As we recognize the heroic actions of public safety officials in those towns, bless our own here in Matthews. Our prayer is that they return home safely to their families after every workday. Father, we ask these things in your blessed and holy name. Amen.
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 Please stand for the pleas of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Manager, are there any items to be added to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Nobody signed up for public comment? Would anybody in the audience like to come speak before us on any topic? Seeing none. Jay, would you like to recognize the planning board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Beginning on the second row, we have Jana Reeve, Scott Query, Mike Rowan, Chair David Weezer, and Mike Foster.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting for a public hearing. So move.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're going to consider zoning application 219-697 Harkey to change the zoning from R-12 to OCD and RVS on that certain property designated as 2026 Matthews Min Hill Road and belonging to Richard and John Harkey and being further designated as tax parcel 215-102-01. This is a continuation from July 8th. Jay?
Thank you. Well, I come to you empty-handed. I don't have a new presentation for you. As you saw in the memo, we have just a few minor changes. As I mentioned, the density has been reduced from 21 homes to 20. There are still office buildings fronting on Matthews Min Hill Road as a part of this development approximately, or up to 15,000 square feet. The applicant does have a presentation for you that they prepared in advance to us a few hours ago that has some of the new architecture for the homes as well as the office buildings that they would like to share with you. So unless you have any further questions for me at this time, I will turn the mic over to the applicant.
Any questions for Jay? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Wayne Harris with Harris Engineering, representing the petitioner. First of all, I want to say to the Mayor Pro Tem and the board, we appreciate the opportunity that y'all gave us for the deferral of the public hearing. And hopefully, we've made good use of that time and were able to answer some of the questions or show some of the information that y'all wanted to see before. Some of, I'll try not to bore you or spend a whole lot of time with this, but got to run through here fairly quickly. This is the rezoning plan. It's essentially the same plan that was submitted before with the exception of some of the development notes and site development data. And Jay has touched on part of that. Something that, and I'll take the blame for not illustrating this better before. This is an excerpt from the Matthews zoning, official Matthews zoning map. Doesn't show the entire town, of course. It's just the part that affects us. The subject property is this piece right here. This site right here is Butler High School. And this blue line is the highway overlay district. And this is a nice map and it has a lot of information on it. But the fact is, it's kind of confusing. What it doesn't really explain is land use. So we've taken the liberty to prepare a slightly different version of this using Polaris. Still, this is our subject property right there. This is the highway overlay through there. Here's Matthews Min Hill Road, Butler High School at this location. What you see when you analyze this map, though, is that this yellow line or the yellow slash green line really defines the boundary of land use in this corner of Matthews. Everything back in the north and east direction from this line is traditional, single-family lots. It's what we tend to think of. We think about residential subdivisions. And almost without exception, everything to the west and south of this line is higher, in cases, in some cases, much higher use. We have institutional uses. We have, I think, some industrial uses. We have multifamily. We have highway business. There's a little bit of everything in there. But what you see, and my point is this, is, oops, got happy fingers. What you see is that this line really does, is the demarcation line for land use in this corner of the world. I know there's been some concern, talking to some members of the commission, that they were concerned with what I'll call zoning creep. They wanted to sort of not see this business component continue down. And we agree. We think that this is the natural place for that to stop. And the fact is, it's already stopped in terms of functionality on the ground. And we think this is single-family land use at this location. The dilemma that we have is what do we do up here on the front of this property to buffer or insulate the 20 lots that would sit to the rear? And our intent with that is to rezone the front two corners, small parcels, as office with very strict uses of what would happen there. This is, excuse me, this is development note two from the proposed rezoning plan. We are not proposing any kind of quote-unquote "business" use. I know that's been one of the concerns, the concept. I think the mindset sometimes is it's all business. If you're zoning it to office, that's not the case. This is strictly office. We would anticipate that the ultimate users of these properties, of these two parcels, would probably be some type of use that would see the next-door high school as actually being a client base, whether it be an orthodontist, sports medicine, or something else. You kind of have a built-in clientele, so to speak. And the other thing that Jay alluded to that we have added is elevation information. I think at one of the prior portions of public hearings, since we've continued this a few times, Commissioner Query had posed the question, are these the actual houses that you want to build? With that in mind, they were photographs that we had taken illustrating what we thought were architectural elements. Well, I can tell you at this point, this house, one, house two, house three, house four, those, these are rendered elevations of what the builder is proposing to build in the single-family portion. I would anticipate that he would have additional plans and will address in a few minutes how that would come back to the board. This is a rendering of a single-family office building. But to give you a little bit better picture, let me scroll through here. This is the rendered elevation of house one. This is house two off that earlier plan. We're just showing them at a bigger view to kind of give you a better sense. In each case, these houses have the elements and these are noted in the notes. You have a raised slab, a minimum of one, a minimum of one step and a minimum, I think, of at least 12 inches above the curb. Because of the lot width, we do have front-facing garages. So what we're trying to do is to break those up either with two single garage doors or in the case of this one, we're using detailing to give the illusion of, it's a single garage door, but with the added hardware, it gives the illusion of two carriage doors type approaches. They all have eaves, overhangs, they all have porches. They have, we hope, the kind of architectural detailing that you would be looking for for this type of house. Excuse me, in addition, oops, what did I do? Hit the wrong button. I'm back, sorry. This is the rendering of a single-family, a single-story office building. We did have a quickie plan, the petitioner had a quickie plan prepared for the, for the two office parcels. The dilemma we have there is that we don't know who would use those yet. So I want to show you three different things, two of which I know the board, or I think the board's already familiar with. But the idea is that we are requesting the office zoning, but we don't want the building to look like an office. We want to, I'll show you two other things here real quick. This is a proposed building that was in a recently approved rezoning that will be built at 300 West John Street. Again, it has residential style to it. This is, I mean, this is a photograph of a building at 534 West John. Again, it's kind of the country farmhouse look. It doesn't look like an office. This one's actually office condos, whereas the previous one. This is going to be owner occupied on the upper two levels and tenant's space at the lower level. But right now, we don't know what the ultimate user would be or whether it would be office condos. For example, if this were an orthodontist or a sports medicine or something like that, it's probably going to be in a one-story configuration just because of how they utilize that space. If it tends to be more of a general office limitation, in all likelihood, it could be in a two-story configuration. So I mentioned earlier the notes. This is development note 7B from the rezoning plan, Architectural Standards. And a couple of things to point out. What 7B talks about is the plan that's being presented as part of the rezoning. And then the second sentence reads, according to the elevations, the buildings to be constructed and the sites should be designed and constructed so that the elevations are substantially similar in appearance to the attached conceptual schematic rendering of images. And then the last sentence of that is, elevations of any building constructed on parcels A and B should be residential in style and scale and have architectural elements such as entry stoops, et cetera, et cetera, that are similar to the proposed single-family. Our point is that we're showing you the actual single-family elevations. We just don't have the final office elevations yet, but they will be of the same character. In addition, this is note 7C that talks about what happens with other plans. So the applicant can return with additional plans. In the case of the single-family, we're showing four. If he comes back with four more, those plans actually have to come back to the Board of Commissioners. And that's for the single-family. In the case of the parcels A and B, which are the two office parcels, any plan has to, any office building to be constructed must be approved by the planning board. So in essence, we've kind of broken this down into two steps. One is the vote on the land use, which will be part of the rezoning. But since we don't have the actual office buildings yet, we're committing in the rezoning petition that we would return with those actual plans for approval by the board. And I think, I did it again, sorry. And again, this is just, this is the same plan that I think we have seen before. The two small office sites on the front. Again, the idea, and those plan view figures admittedly won't exactly match what we have in terms of the rendered elevations. That is intended more just to show you building, sighting, as opposed to say, hey, that's that building and we're putting it right here. Again, the intent is that we want this structure and that structure or structures to look like residential product. We don't want it to appear to be an office. When somebody's riding by here that doesn't know any better, they're going to look here and they're just going to see what they think the house. The parking that would serve those two uses will be to the rear. It'll be masked, something that I think Jay pointed out either in the report or maybe you said a minute ago. There is a bunch of stuff growing along the property in this area. But it's mostly a pine thicket. The pines probably average from two inches to six inches in caliper. They're so thick, you really can't walk through in a straight line. You got to go bobbing and weaving. I'm personally of the opinion that I don't know that I would save any of that stuff. I would, we'd much prefer, I would much prefer to see a nice landscaping plan. And we have illustrated part of what that could look like. Again, that's still subject to discussion with the town arborist, other, actual plant selection or spacing or clustering. So, and then the 20 single-family lots to the rear. I think a member of the planning board had posed the question previously, if we are only showing 20 lots, why are we saying there's 21 allowed? The reason for that is that we're still not 100% sure what size the BMP would be. We are sure that it's oversized. And in theory, there could be a 21st lot. But again, to give the board and the planning board a clear answer, we're just giving up that lot that might otherwise have been achievable. So it's 20 lots with the two office portions on the front corners. And with that, I'll hush and try to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions for Mr. Harris and the board? Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, John. Jay, will you bring up a current aerial of this property, please? With a Google Maps, please? And while Jay brings that up, I'll read on the current site plan that's up for consideration. Item 8A and B, tree preservation and landscaping. Tree preservation areas will meet the intent of the ordinance and may occur in various areas within the site. Not withstanding the foregoing, applicant reserves the right to plant trees on the site in lieu of retaining trees as permitted under the ordinance. Item B says, in accordance with the requirements and standards of the ordinance, applicant shall work with and obtain the approval of the town arborist on the final landscaping plan. If I compare that site plan or that aerial to your site plan, you're clear-cutting those trees. Is that correct?
We're clear-cutting the trees in the areas of the lots and the BMP.
Okay.
We have a drawing, I think, that better illustrates what happens in the middle of the property.
The current site plan you have in our agenda packet shows trees along the sidewalk in front of, around the parking lot, behind the buildings, and eight, give or take, out front. And our note from planning staff says there's no landscape plan. We've got a site plan now that still says 20 or 21. It shows 20 homes on it now.
It says, it doesn't say 20 or 21, it says 20.
20. I'm still not any, I don't get it. You say you're going to follow intent and you'll get with and will develop this landscape plan once you talk to Ralph. You say you're not going to clear cut, but according to your site plan, you are and going to come back with spotted trees along the street around the perimeter of the parking lot.
The rear of the lots are not disturbed. We actually have a grading plan that we had to prepare as part of the PCO concept plan through Mecklenburg County Engineering. So.
Where is that?
It's not part of the rezoning package. It's ancillary, I mean, it's part of the process.
The site plan I'm looking at shows only trees along the street around the perimeter of the parking lot. And I see an aerial that's covered with trees. I want to see exactly what we're voting on. If it says it's on the site plan, that's what we're going to get. I'm not comfortable with even moving forward with this until we see on a site plan exactly what's staying and what's going. I mean, there's a lot of words that say may and will and, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not anywhere near ready to even move forward talking about this until there's some level of commitment on what we're doing.
Do you care to respond to that?
I will make an attempt. The proposed plan satisfies the ordinance requirements. Actually, it exceeds the ordinance requirements in terms of UDO, tree planning, et cetera. What this plan doesn't. This plan is not intended to illustrate what is being clear-cut versus what's not being clear-cut. These are proposed to be slab homes. Because of that, the pads are graded fairly level. These rear lot, rear yard areas on each lot, we are preserving trees in there. In some of these cases, we have more room. This lot's deeper than that lot. So we're going to be able to preserve more trees on this side of the street. We have a fairly significant grade change from the right side, looking at this map, from the right side of the property to the left side. So we've got to do some cutting on this side, balancing the road end and doing some filling on that side. These trees that you're seeing along here are not the only trees that are remaining. We're simply adding, or showing those because those are the street tree that are required as part of the UDO. The area, did it again. The area to the rear of the parking is a landscape buffer that again is part of the UDO requirement. So we're showing that we are providing landscaping in there. This, the trees that are being shown along the front, basically, this is the proposed planning detail that's going through there. And, let me go to a different view. Let me go back to this one. Maybe this requires sort of a leap of imagination, but these are the two office pieces. This area right here and right here, that's where the single-family lots are. This is the approximate location of the BMP. Again, we have sized, we have to go through and do preliminary sizing that BMP. We actually sized it, I think, for 22 single-family homes and maximum area that would be located on the office. So I'm, I've been doing this 30-plus years. I have no doubt that BMP footprint is bigger than what it's going to wind up being. Everything else on the site remains untouched in terms of the undisturbed open space requirement. We exceed that. In terms of the tree protection requirement, we exceed that. And again, what doesn't get illustrated in these views is that we have trees that we're saving on both sides of the property along the rear lots. So I'm not sure that that answers Commissioner Melton's question, but.
Mr. Harris, the board has seen in some applications, folks do hatch out where they plan on having tree-sav areas. And I think that's the point of Commissioner Melton's question is, you hear the talk, there's words over there, but I think everybody's very visual. And the board has been concerned about trees for a long time. And to be overly cautious helps strengthen your application.
Okay. Now, we'll be happy to add that information.
Commissioner DeMint?
Mr. Harris, thank you for coming back again tonight. And I'm struggling with whether to give you the good news or the bad news first. I'm going to give you the bad news first. And that's, I do share the concern about not seeing the tree-sav area and the exact, along with the exact replanting schematic for the landscape plan. I would like for it to stay at 20 homes and not go over that so that we don't clear-cut more than usual. And the other thing we've talked about is staggering the lot, where the houses actually sit on the lots so that there is some privacy in the backyard and you're not looking directly across even in front yards. And you've got nice staggering along the curve at the front of the development. But as the road straightens out in the back, I'd like for you to consider staggering those houses slightly. I think it just takes a couple of feet, maybe, to make a difference on that. And I'd like for Matthews to have more than the minimum elevation on that front porch. Just like you did on the rendering for the office building, you had, I think, three steps up on the front porch. If you could give us three on those single-family homes and not just the minimum of one, that would enhance the way that neighborhood looks tremendously. Now for the good news. I do appreciate the way you used, overlaid the overlay plan along with the zoning. And I think that the way you have presented this is a hybrid of retail office space and single-family homes. And I think that within itself makes a good transition from that business district to a single-family home district because you've got both. And with careful consideration of what goes into that office space is important so that there aren't things open at night. And it looks like you've done that. And I do like the architecture that you have settled on for the office building that you presented as well as the homes now, except for that front porch. And I do appreciate the fact that you will come back to us for any rendering changes. So there you go, the bad and the good.
Can I address a couple of those points?
Sure.
In terms of the tree-sav, we can add that information. Like I say, we have to go through the PCO concept plan with Mecklenburg County, which we, we're still in the midst of that. But we have a plan where we're pretty darn sure where the grading limits are going to be and therefore what the tree-sav is going to be. In terms of the density, it's 20 homes, period. So that's not going to change. The planning plan, we can take another look at that or work with the town arborist. I think that we made an attempt to give you at least some idea, sort of at least kind of what the threshold is and what we think would work up there. And in terms of the stagger, a couple of things. First of all, oops, did it again. What you're seeing in this plan isn't a house footprint. It's a building envelope. So the houses would generally be somewhere in that. Now, the fact is, if you look at, say, that lot right there, that building envelope could be moved back a little bit further. Or if this house is 40 feet deep and this house is 50 feet deep, they both, I think that envelope's 55 feet deep. So there's room to do that. The other thing that we've done is that, let me find the note. This is under Architectural Standards. Says a minimum of 75% of the single-family dwelling units constructed on the site shall have, this is note G, by the way, 7G, shall have a covered porch with a minimum depth of five feet, a maximum of 25% of the single-family detached dwellings will have a covered entry stoop with a minimum depth of four feet. I don't know if you recall, and I probably should have included this, but when we had shown the series of photographs, I think, meeting before last, again, thank you for the continuation. What we saw is that, to your point, the idea is that you don't want every house to look just alike. But we found a number of houses that is good-looking product, but it didn't have a porch. But it has an entry stoop, cupboard, sometimes a column, sometimes just handrails. So by going 75% minimum porches, 25% max stoops, it gives us another way to sort of break that up and still be consistent with the style. The, there are a number of notes that address what we're going to do. So the intent is to stagger that so it doesn't look like they're just all lined up the same down the street.
Okay. Commissioner Query, you had a comment?
Yes. You and I talked before, and what I had told you and I've said to others is that we, I reckon myself, sitting on the council for many years, we committed that where commercial is would not go any further outdoors, out wild. And neither would the out wild come any further close in, that it would be residential. So for the first thing is the obvious part there, even though, you know, I see your thing about entrance, that is a business there and it is right beside the school. That's number one. Number two is I agree with Commissioner Melton about the trees because there's nothing. Number two is I agree with Commissioner Milton about the trees because there's nothing guaranteeing us that. And that whole site is the buffer area for the neighborhood behind it. And we've had complaints with them already about noise coming from Butler. So, those two things are a problem. And the other is the porch depth. You're saying four foot to five foot. And what I would want to see is at least a six-foot porch so you can, neighbors could sit on it and enjoy their neighborhood. The other thing is the setback in the stagger, usually we're given the stagger on that so that we kind of have an idea of what's going to be staggered on the houses. Your footprint is straight line, so as far as what we're agreeing to tonight is you can put them every one, the exact same thing, and make them all line up across the front. There's nothing saying that you're going to stagger them. So, that, along with the fact that I think 20 is a maximum number for that area, is a problem for me, and the business is a problem area. So, I can't support what you've got right now under the circumstances we've got. And we've given, we've given two, I think, two delays on this, and I think it's time that we nail it down and go forward one way or the other.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Harris?
I have a few comments. I agree mostly with Commissioner Query. We're kind of like Montana, the show-me state, so you know, you've got to show us what you're actually going to do. So, I think you need a more illustrative drawing that shows the actual tree save. This board, since I've been elected, has been burned many a time by developers saying, "We're going to try to save that," and then they clear cut. So, we don't like that too much anymore. So, if you could show us actually what you're going to save, that would be appreciated. And also the stagger, as Commissioner Query said. I do like the fact that you have businesses in the front because what really turned me when you and I met was the thought that those could be a sports medicine business or orthodontist where kids could literally walk from the high school there, would be incredibly convenient. And although you wouldn't know it, I wore braces as a kid. And, you know, having to drive 20 miles to the orthodontist, it'd be nice if it was in the front yard of my high school. So, of course, you can't guarantee that would be the use, but that would be awesome if it was. Something that really complimented, I think, an orthodontist or sports medicine doctor would love to have a location there. Also, it'd only be used, you know, during normal business hours and not necessarily, you know, on the weekends or Sundays or at night or something like that. So, that's the only comments I have. Any other comments from the board? Planning Board have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mike?
Just one, on the commercial buildings on the front, I know you can't, or you said you can't necessarily commit to exactly what style those are going to be or even the number of stories, but you would commit to making sure they're all the same.
Not necessarily, and it goes back to a point the board has. And so, we would appreciate some input on this. You don't want all the houses to look alike, and I think if we want the front of this to look like part of the residential architecture, I don't think we want that building, that office building, to look alike. Because then they start to look like something they're not. We want them to look like houses. So, if one's one-story and one's two-story, and one has a porch and one has a stoop, and they're different colors, I would think that we would not want them to look alike. But at the same time, we think it's appropriate land use, so if the board wants to speak to that point, we're all ears.
If the comment you just made about one being one-story and one being two-story, that was kind of a concern, because I think, I can understand to a...
I can understand to a point why you wanted a little bit of variation, but I think if you had one, one-story building or two one-story buildings and then a two-story building, it would look much too different.
I beg the difference. If it looks like a residence as opposed to looking like an office building, then that's the goal we're after. So, the point is to try to create architecture that doesn't look like an office building, it looks like a residential structure. So, I would, if left to me, I would think that I want a mix of house style or architectural style, so it, but it still is going to look like residential structure.
Commissioner DeMent, you had another follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Harris, I'd just like to say I do agree with you on that. We're going for things that look residential, and if it all looks the same, that would give it a very cookie cutter look. So, it'd be my preference that the commercial buildings do take on a different single family style look, but not be identical.
And I'll give you an example as part of that response. If anybody's familiar with Colony on Fairview, which is the two-story brick office building complex right across from Phillips Place or Earth Fair, they're good-looking architecture. As a matter of fact, there's two right across the street here, one that Harry Gimmer built about 35 years ago and one that was built in the past few years. And they have a residential character to them. But when I start building a bunch of them side by side, then they take on a different look. So, I do not see these being the same architecture at all.
All right. I think that does it. Mr. Harris, I don't believe that you stated your address for the record. Could you...
I'm sorry. 5200 Park Road, Suite 231, 28209. And I do have a question slash comment about the stagger question. There, on one hand, I'm hesitant to show stagger on the official rezoning plan if it then locks those positions in. So, while the builder might say, "I'm going to build these four houses," depending on what options there are, if he has a different elevation, deeper porch, whatever, what you actually wind up selling to go on a given lot could affect how you want to stagger them. That might not match, you don't know who's going to buy which lot. So, could we address that with a note? Does that satisfy the board?
Well, speaking only for myself, I think the intent is the, it sounds like the consensus is that the builders didn't want a straight line of houses, they want some differentiation. So, I don't know who mentioned that. Barbara, was that you? Would that do it?
I think, and Commissioner Miller has something to say, too.
I think you're showing, you're showing the basic footprint or building envelope, as long as when you do put them in the ground that they're, you're not looking down a row of houses. That'd be fine if you stagger them back and forth depending on the topography. I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. This will come back before us, I believe, in our first meeting in September, which will be September 9th. Is that correct? I think so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Public comment.
Oh, anybody here have any comment, want to speak for or against this project? Not all at once. Okay. Anyone? Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to reconvene our regular meeting. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Urban, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll go on to planning and development business. We'll start by receiving a report from the planning board. David?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. I have the planning board report for the July 23 meeting. There's two items for the town board action and one information only. Item one is zoning application 2019-698 Elizabeth Lane Elementary, R/ICD, change of conditional requests for mobile classrooms. The planning board voted unanimously to approve of a three-year sunset and 1,800-foot double-stack queuing in the school bus lot on Elizabeth Lane campus. Members found the request consistent with the Matthews land use plan and allowed for an institutional use to remain along the Highway 51 corridor. The second item is zoning motion 2019-3, creation of entertainment district overlay, ENT-0, text and map. The ENT-0 was recommended for approval unanimously as it was found to be consistent with the Matthews land use plan, and it reinforced the recommendations within the ENT Small Area Plan. The planning board members asked for the correction of formatting mistakes and addition of Compliancey Plan Review Template. The last item is for administrative amendment, 124 West John Street, request to make changes to the facade. Members of the planning board voted six to one to approve a conditional note change on the approved site plan. Condition Note 7 read, "No exterior changes are to be made to the structure which currently exists upon the property." The applicant was wishing to change the note to read, "No exterior changes to be made to the structure which currently exists upon the property. However, exterior changes limited to repair, replacement windows, doors, painting and colors, and architectural accents shall be allowed." Planning Board member asked for that the approval be conditional on adding additional verbiage that would have the property owner work, the town staff, for final approval on design, colors, textures, materials and improvements.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dave? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. David, I have a question on the administrative amendment, 124 West John Street. Is that the former library, right off of Library Lane? Am I right in that building?
Yes.
They want to make changes to the facade. I'm assuming they want to make improvements. I don't understand, help me understand why this is a problem or it's being resisted because that's not one of the better-looking buildings along that strip.
Yeah, I'm going to have Jay because I was not present for that meeting.
Okay.
So, Jay may have a few more details on that than I do.
Commissioner Miller, I'll point you to the sentence, I guess the second sentence there that says, "Conditional Note 7." The note read specifically, "No exterior changes are to be made to the structure which currently exists." When planning staff looked at this, we took that to mean that you couldn't make any changes whatsoever to the exterior of the property, whether it be replacement of the windows, changing the paint color. A very tightly written note. We would not suggest that a conditional note be written in that format today. So, the administrative amendment loosened that note to allow, you know, replacement of windows, replacement of siding on the structure. It does not allow for any additional square footage. You cannot tear the building down, you can't add a second floor to it. So, it'll still be the same basic building. We're just giving them the flexibility to...
And these are conditional notes from an older zoning from years ago?
'07 was the zoning.
I mean, the building looks like Lego art from 1962. It needs something. I know that's a little blunt for everybody, but it, that building needs some improvement. So, I would, I would hope that we would welcome improvements on there. That's all I can say about that.
Commissioner DeMent?
That is one of my least favorite buildings in the town as well, but one concern I do have about loosening it too much. I wish that we had tighter controls over paint colors because I don't want to see another pink or purple or fluorescent something or other go in our downtown area. That is destroying our character with those bright colors, so the painting colors I have a concern with.
If I'm looking at it right, what we ask is that any, a lot of changes go through staff for approval. And if I recall the renderings on this, it would improve the building by putting windows in and...
I don't have a problem with the windows, but I have a problem with anybody being able to pick out any paint colors, and I think we need to be tighter on that all the way around. It's just a shame we let some colors go on historical buildings. This one, in my opinion, I realize it is historical, but not, it's not old Matthews, Old Town. We need to do a better job at preserving our history.
So, Commissioner DeMent, to just clarify, that's part of, not part of this request? Are you just saying from a big picture standpoint or...
Well, it says that we are to loosen it and that, that we should change it so that they have some flexibility on painting and painting colors.
So, Mr. Buckley, I think about historic districts have some authority to regulate color.
Then how did we allow the fluorescent pink and fluorescent purple?
Because that's not a historic district, I need, I need a little help here. Historic district and historic buildings are two different things. I don't know if historic buildings are regulated the same way as historic buildings with, or historic districts with paint colors, but we have not addressed that currently in our ordinance. So, it's something we can look at. I just, I think, Mr. Buckley, we've got to be a little bit careful as a board to, we have lanes we have to stay in with, too, as far as what we regulate.
That's correct. I think the overlay also would have an impact on this, wouldn't it, Jay?
Yeah, the way the overlay is written, it references paint colors. I think the language says should be in harmony with adjacent buildings, and that's very tough for us to apply. So, when someone comes in with a blue color as an accent, does, is that shade of blue in harmony with the adjacent building or is it too bright? So, it's a very, you know, trying to regulate colors is very tough from a judgment call perspective, and we've typically erred on letting people choose the paint colors they need for their structure rather than trying to issue notices of violation. I understand there are some concerns with the few storefronts.
I'm not happy about that.
Any other questions for Mr. Weisert?
Okay. We'll move on then to Item 10B, Planning and Zoning Related Actions. Item one, motion 2019-2, to change the zoning on three parcels as follows, which was deferred from July 8th, to change the zoning from I-1 to R-12 on that certain parcel designated as 433 East John Street and being further designated as tax parcel 215-014-06. B, to change the zoning from BH to R-15 on that certain parcel designated as 1364 Matthews Mint Hill Road and being further designated as tax parcel 215-081-07. And C, to change the zoning from BH to R-15 on that certain parcel designated as 11210 Brigham Road and further designated as tax parcel 215-081-29. Mr. Camp?
Thank you. Based on the zoning applications we've received, I think it's now been two months ago, we've got two of these three parcels coming up for public hearing. The board did say you wanted to continue deferring decision on a monthly basis on this, on this proposed zoning motion. So, that is our recommendation to defer to September 9th.
Any questions or motions? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Based on Mr. Camp's recommendation and the planning board's recommendation, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the decision on zoning motion 2019-2 to September 9th meeting.
Second. All in... Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect that that passed unanimously. Item two, zoning application 2019-698 Elizabeth Lane Elementary, to change the existing conditions on that certain RICD, on that certain property designated as 121 Elizabeth Lane and further commonly referred to as Elizabeth Lane Elementary School and being further designated as tax parcel 227-034-91. Jay, you're a popular guy tonight.
This rezoning does come with a recommendation for approval. As you will see in the memo, we've, staff has recommended a sunset extension of three years. It was initially requested by CMS for two years. I'm in conversation with the previous superintendent. As previously discussed, the Landsdown Elementary School project will create some changes in capacity, and we feel like three years is an appropriate timeframe. Also, for decision is the proposed new queuing plan. I did send that out earlier. I don't know if you all have had a chance to look at that, but we do have a fairly large group of CMS representatives here this evening if you all would like an update on the proposed changes to queuing at the site in the afternoon hour. So, we've got that presentation ready if you all would like to...
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Hi.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Crystal L, Elizabeth Lane, 121 Elizabeth Lane.
Principal.
I'm the principal at Elizabeth Lane. I'm the principal at Elizabeth Lane. Okay, if you want to just go to the beginning of the carpool, we, we hosted a tour a couple of weeks ago to feature some of the CMS security enhancements. That was one of the questions that we had addressed in the last meeting. But our plan to address the afternoon traffic congestion, the recommendation was made that we allow cars to enter the car line where the students will be picked up, beginning at 2:00 PM. That's not possible, because that would mean that both of our fire lanes would be blocked before cars are able to move through. So our new plan, I think if you go to the next slide, keep going, next one. We're going to have some additional striping added to our bus parking lot, so that we can allow the cars that come before traffic can start moving in the afternoon. Parents get there as early as 2:00 at times to start lining up. So we'll have them turning into the bus lot, and we're adding a second queuing lane in the bus lot. So that really is just going to stage those cars there from 2:00 until 2:35 or 2:40, when we can direct that inner lane inside of the car line, which is right before the students start to dismiss. Then we still have cars waiting in the bus lot, and at that time, we'll have staff directing those cars and waves, once the traffic can begin to flow out again, once we're able to start moving. So we've worked out a plan that we can get the buses on the lot, still have cars queuing in the lot, until the officer can begin allowing entrance and exit into that main car lot when carpool starts to flow.
Okay. This was in our packet. Are there any questions?
John.
We need to, I think, have a motion to recue, or we need a motion to recuse Commissioner DeMent, because she lives adjacent to this school.
Excuse me, not a motion, she just needs to recuse.
Okay.
I need to recuse myself from any deliberation or voting on this particular application, as my residential property is adjacent to Elizabeth Lane Elementary.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner DeMent? All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Query?
Yeah. Yeah, I've been pretty hard on, on them about the security. In meeting out there the other day, it's not exactly what I would anticipate or wanted, but I do believe that it's satisfactory. The only other thing I would like is to see if they could put the fence around the whole trailer area, since it is still accessible from Ms. DeMent's house. And I think it would be better if we had it to where no one can enter from anywhere around the trailers. The timeline changing from, the, the school system asked for two years, and then we asked for three. And I think the, the one is what it has been all this time, and I think that would be the appropriate one. But if not one year, I think two years would be, and mainly for the reason that two years still puts it in election time concerns, that where the commissioners sitting or running have got to, at least answer those questions. Three years would put it in between it, to where that's not a item that's on the things for commissioners to address. I think they should continue to address our actions on that school system on election time.
So, to be clear, you're recommending that it be two years instead of three? Okay. Can anybody from the school comment on the fence increasing the... Welcome back.
Would, thanks. Would you like for me to address the reason behind the three-year?
Sure, but also the fence?
And the fence. So there actually is an agreement with Sardis Plantation that we keep a walking lane open that's in that area between the two. And so really, the fence was just a forced entry to the front of the school. It's more of just keeping parents from coming through the parking lot out to the mobile area. It's not a, a six-feet-tall fence. I mean, it really is just to force you to enter at the front of the school, where we have our safety enhancements in place. I think when we discuss the three-year rather than the two-year, in two years is when the conversations are going to be held about which students will be rezoned from Elizabeth Lane to attend Lansdowne. And I know the mayor was saying that he wasn't sure that the board wanted to be included in those conversations, because of the confusion that it might lead to, because those would be happening at the same time. So we have talked about different security enhancements, and at this time, the fence has been serving the purpose as we've needed it. And, you know, as we discussed when we did our tour, unfortunately, if there were someone who wanted to get into that area, the fence isn't going to stop them either. And so the other things that we have in place, the notification to the office, the resource officers that are there a good amount of the time, those are helping us meet the needs that we have right now.
Did you also want to discuss the three-year? Or did you? I'm sorry if I...
Well, that was the, that was what I was suggesting about the conversation that we had in this last meeting and at our security tour, is that in, in two years, if we delay this for two years, we'll be coming before you at the same time that CMS is going to be holding community meetings about which students will be rezoned from Elizabeth Lane to Lansdowne. And that could be just very convoluted for people to understand that it's not connected to the Sunset Clause, because there will be some, you know, changes hard, and so not everyone will be happy about the changes.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I understand the, the logic behind the three-year, based on your explanation and Commissioner Query, that if, if three years was recurring, every second decision would be an election year anyway, at six, 246. So, so it doesn't eliminate it from an election year, it would just be, you know, every other decision towards CMS. But you have agreed to fund the policemen for traffic, and you have agreed to the queuing, improved queuing, so it won't back up onto 51 or, or too badly on Elizabeth Lane, correct?
That's correct. This actually adds additional, it's, it exceeds what the recommendation was.
Okay.
Commissioner Query?
I want to come back to you on, on what I was asking, and let you know, the, what, I will say, your presentation the other day was excellent.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that. I think from the safety standpoint, I don't have a problem for zoning, for voting on this, at this time. The other with the three, the two of the three-year is strictly a personal thing, to where I think even if that's the time when you're doing that, I think the commissioners should be responsible to be able to answer to those questions, and not, not be a bye year to where, oh, we got by this, and we don't have to tell the folks what we're going to do. So that's my reasoning for the two years.
Any other questions or comments or motions? Commissioner Urban?
The only, the only thing I was going to say, I do appreciate CMS and our staff working through this whole issue with the traffic and the queuing, the security, the police, that was my outstanding question last time. I, I'm hesitant, I, I don't have a problem with the three, but I'm actually sort of a proponent for one, if, if the board would support the one year, because of the fact that there's been a sort of a little bit of a controversy going on, or resolved the controversy in the last few days with regards to the superintendent. I'd kind of like to take this time as a, as a breather, let him get his feet under him, come out here, meet with us, talk to us, et cetera. Let's get this queuing program in play, and use this one year as sort of a hiatus, to sort of come back and report on all these things. Then if two years out works, that's great. So if, if everybody's sort of like, no, I don't want to go there, that's fine, and I'll support the three, but I think maybe one year, just to sort of get through this period in time with the CMS.
Commissioner Query?
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm waiting.
I make a motion that we approve the plan that's in front of us, except for changing it from three years to one year, at least for the next time, so that it does give us that time. I had not thought about what Commissioner Urban had said, but I think that's a wise decision, to let's see how things settle out at that time. And it really doesn't, I don't think, puts any different pressure on you. I mean, it does put pressure on the board, because that does put us in election time. And, and I think that's a good thing, for us to have to answer. But I, that's my motion, is to, to do it all, except for the one, change it from three years to one year.
Okay. Do we, do we get clarification?
You were talking two years, and you just made a motion for one year?
I did. But I agreed with you.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Query, seconded by Commissioner Urban. Any further discussion? Commissioner, do we...
Go ahead. Sure? Yeah. I, I just caution the board before we vote on two years, that the Sunset Clause...
One year.
Or one year, I apologize. When it comes back before us, if this motion is successful, we're still not going to have the data we need, once Lansdowne is built. We're just going to be arbitrarily coming back every year, for the sake of coming back every year. Three years out, that school will be built, we'll have the data, we'll know how, what the load is on that school, and we can make a decision there. I just, I, I'll, I'll support whatever the board decides, as a board, but I make sure we're taking it down to one year for a good reason. Are we going to really have the data we need to either extend or not extend the Sunset Clause in one year? Or are we just going to come back for the sake of coming back and extending it again?
Commissioner Miller?
I, I wanted to ask Commissioner Query if he would tack on the consistent and reasonable clarification to your, to your motion, please.
Yep.
You got to make it.
I got to make it. Help me, Charlie. It's consistent. The requested zoning action, as most currently amended, is approved and has been found to be consistent with the Matthews Land Use Plan, and is reasonable to the following. The proposed zoning change allows Matthew students to continue attending Elizabeth Lane Elementary School. And it's reasonable that the request allows for the continued usage of additional mobile classrooms at Elizabeth Lane Elementary, and helps ensure that Matthew students attend a local school, while CMS determines a best permanent solution for use of the mobile units.
Okay. And Commissioner Urban, do you concur with that?
Yes, I concur. Thank you.
Okay, let's call the vote. All in favor? All those opposed? So it passes, what is that, five to one, with Commissioner Melton voting negative?
Four to one.
Four to one. Sorry.
Four to one.
Counted you, Barbara. Okay, Barbara, would you like to rejoin us now?
I would. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome back.
I would like to make one statement, because I see the other CMS people in the back there. I do appreciate y'all working with, I know I have been a pain on the security, but it was strictly for our kids, and not for what y'all do. You do a good job.
And the traffic queuing is very innovative, and it's going to be a lot safer alternative. We greatly appreciate all the collaborative work with the town to get that going. That's fantastic work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to our final zoning action for tonight. Motion 219-3, ENT-0, to amend the UDO to create the Entertainment District Overlay that would apply to the same geographical boundaries of the Entertainment District Small Area Plan, and the adoption of said boundaries on the zoning map. Mr. Camp?
We have recommended deferral, as we've heard from several of you, that you have some outstanding questions about this. I'm happy to field questions at this time. I know the mayor had some questions, obviously he's not here. So if you want to bounce some, some thoughts or concerns off me now, or I'm happy to meet with any of you all at a later date, to provide some clarification on the proposal.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Mr. Camp, the deferral is because they're already trying to rezone, two properties are already trying to rezone to the, what we want the overlay to become. Is that correct?
So that is for the zoning motion that the board initiated to change the zoning on those three parcels. This is for the Entertainment Overlay District. So it's, it applies to some of the same geographic area, but this is a completely different process, that, that the board could act on tonight if you chose. We're just in deference to the concerns over outstanding questions, we recommended the deferral.
Okay.
Due to that.
Commissioner Urban?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, but, but I will, and I think I already sent you an email, Jay, that I do want to do a sit-down. It would take a lot longer than me pontificating from the dais. So I'd like to go ahead, that we make the motion to take the ENT-O proposal and defer decision until September 9th, 2019.
Second. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Urban, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor? All opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I have a suggestion. When we sit down and meet with Urban, would the board like us to reach out to everybody and offer an opportunity to explain?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Very good idea.
All right, it's now times for reports from advisory boards and committees. The Environmental Advisory Committee, minutes are in the packet. I don't see Mr. Miller here, so...
I know.
Okay. Item 12, the Consent Agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda. Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 12A through F8.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Unfinished business, review possible revitalization projects in advance of the 2020 Republican National Convention.
Hello, good evening. My name is Light Fitzpatrick. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director, and I was asked to come talk to you about some possible projects that we're looking at for the RNC.
Fantastic.
Oh, you're fine. No, that's okay. So I did bring a little PowerPoint. Several weeks ago, staff met, as everyone is aware, the Republican National Committee is coming next year. So staff from Public Works, Planning, Administration, I believe Parking and Recreation, met, and they discussed some possibilities for revitalization around the town. In addition, we also, Debbie Foster and the Treaty Advisory Committee also participated. So... One of the first projects we look at is the retaining wall, which is right outside of, of Town Hall. The wall is, for lack of a better term, failing, and is in need of renovations. Part of what we do, actually, would be clearing all the trees and the, the plant material in that area, and we were looking at doing a tiered wall. So it would go up about three feet, or, and then back about two to three feet, up three feet, and then back again. Then we'd also plant different native plants in the area, and some shrubs along the top. We did talk to the adjacent property owner, and he is in favor of us proceeding with this. So we will continue to talk to him, and keep him in the loop of that. That's Mr. Fowler. So, again, our proposal here, we will be back on the 26th with some additional budget numbers and further discussion. This is just kind of an overview, to give you some information.
Is that current wall wood?
It is.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's six-by-six timbers, or eight-by-eight. So... And we are proposing a cinder block wall.
Okay.
And we thought the tiered would create at least a visual expansion of the driveway also, so you'd not feel like you're driving along the wall.
Right.
So... Here's a picture of the town green. One of the other proposals was installing a fountain in the center of town green. So that is about where it would be. That's not to scale necessarily, and that, that may not be what the fountain actually looks like. I just wanted to kind of use that as a placeholder, or, so you could see exactly what it would be, or approximately where it would be. Some different designs that we were looking at, we were, we were discussing, we'll try to match the, the wall that's on the existing seating areas around it. The center one, we could also do like LED lighting. That was part of the discussion we had. The fountain wouldn't be, probably wouldn't be two pedestals high, it would probably be a single pedestal, something a little bit lower, that would fit in, because we do have a larger tree canopy that's up in that area, too. I think our estimate was approximately $60,000 for, to install the fountain.
Jason, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like, just a quick question. So one of the things, one of the intentions here is to bring this before y'all for ideas, too. So please don't think it's like staff saying, we're just kind of germinating ideas here. We, you know, have kind of a vision. I think the fountain may be something the board wants to make sure you're comfortable with. So, just, just realize, we're, staff's not saying, we got...
I think our estimate was approximately $60,000 for... to install the fountain.
Jason, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick question. So one of the things, one of the intentions here is to bring this before y'all for ideas too. So please don't think it's like staff saying, we're just kind of germinating ideas here. We, you know, have kind of a vision. I think the fountain may be something the board wants to make sure you're comfortable with. So just realize, we're... Staff's not saying, we, you know, we gotta do this or something, something like that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Blodgett. Great point. Yeah, we were just... These were just ideas that we were kind of proposing. We do want your feedback, and obviously any budgeting and how you see this going forward is obvious, I guess. Sorry.
Just one comment on a fountain. I think you'd have to take safety into concern so a child couldn't fall into it and drown or something, but...
Okay.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Melton?
Thank you. We, um... I can't remember if it was last year or which planning conference it was in. A very similar topic was raised with fountains and the retaining wall, and there were several beautification projects that were lifted up. Is... Can that plan be resurrected and shared with the committee to see how much crossover there is and maybe kind of reduce their lift a little bit on some of the ideas?
Good idea.
Certainly.
Sorry, if I can address that. Yeah, this... That was the basis, actually, of some of these ideas.
Okay.
This started out as that presentation, so that they are in here.
Good.
Thank you.
We also discussed replacing the town banners in the downtown area. There are approximately 32. This will cost about $4,000. We were looking at probably purchasing about 36. They've been, you know, in use for a number of years now. Recently, with windstorms and everything, there's been some tearing along the seams, and we've had some come down. So we are looking to replace all of those and purchase a couple additional. Currently, you know, we could look at other designs, but we were saying something pretty similar to what you see in this existing picture. But if there are other ideas about additional designs, we're open to those as well. Stump Town Park. This is that front turf. It's hard to see in this picture, but there's actually some undulations in the turf. So it's... It does hold water in certain areas, not for longer periods of time, but it does get a little... You know, a little bit muddier in those lower spots because the turf isn't perfectly graded. It's just over time, it's kind of settled and it's... Undulates a little bit. There's also discussion of public art, and that was... This is one area that we were looking at. This is right next to the Seaboard and the public parking area. Here's another picture of that same area. And here's an example of public art that was recently shown to town staff. This was, I think, for the Matthews Love Event, but the timing of that, this one didn't... Wasn't involved with that product, with that initiative. But something that we could consider adding. The aesthetic, the Greenway sign or Gateway sign, sorry. I work for, yeah. We're looking at not just the Gateway signs, but also different areas. But here we're looking at planting native plants that would be low maintenance. And really, some of these areas, they're, it's pretty harsh environments, or there's no... No irrigation. There's also the planting strips in the middle of the roads to the islands. So we're also looking at putting some native plants in there. It's really about choosing the right plants for the right areas. So we need something that's real hardy, low maintenance, and low growing, but also to add some different color. And it could be anything from a white or a yellow to a different shades of green, depending on how much shade there is. And we did work with Debbie and a local native plant expert on trying to identify some of these plants for the different areas. Here's a... Just a small example of what we're looking at. It's really just creating a large, you know, a flow of different plants. So this one shows a small spring blooming native tree behind the sign, and then just below a lot of different colors and low-growing ground covers. This is the South Trade, Weddington Road and Pleasant Plains intersection. This is actually NC DOT streets. There was discussion about either plant material hardscapes. There's not a lot of room in this area, and there are utilities. And with them being... With this being an NC DOT right-of-way, there's a lot of challenges trying to add a hardscape to this, so we were looking, probably leaning towards a green wall, like a Carolina Jasmine or something like that is what the plant expert... She even said that it's pretty limited what we'd be able to do here just because of the space that we're working with within the right-of-way. And it's actually not replace wayfinding signs, it's adding additional wayfinding signs. So we're looking at bringing in a consultant to assess our wayfinding signs and adding additional as needed.
Commissioner Melton?
Thank you. Are there additional phases, and I'll call it the buzz-buzzell plan, the wayfinding gateway branding project? Are there additional phases that need to be completed that could be under this program?
I think CJ is actually, I think, working on.
So from the original plan, there are still, I guess, three gateway signs that haven't been installed. One at Matthews Min Hill Road by the hospital that we are looking to move forward with now. One on Sam Newell Road, the initial location we looked at, I don't think it's feasible. So we're looking at a new location, and we'll be putting something in there. And then the third one is at the roundabout at Idlewild Road, and we're going to bring back to the board some ideas for that area. So, yeah, it will all be done by that time. And my understanding is we can use tourism funds for that as well.
Thank you, CJ. CJ, another question, follow-up. Do you really feel it's necessary to hire a consultant to decide what wayfinding signs we need?
That's something we'll assess. Typically, no. I think we can look around and figure it out ourselves.
I wouldn't think would be a whole lot of signs to add, so maybe just staff and we can come up with what we need, I would hope, without hiring somebody to tell us.
And then the last thing we were looking at was the downtown pedestrian lighting. These are the current fixtures. They're obsolete right now as a light breaks or is no longer usable. Duke has to retrofit the existing poles. And there are a couple throughout town, but here are some of the other... A few, a couple of the alternatives that we are looking at.
Go ahead, Jason.
Light, which one of the ones down there on North Trade Street? Like, like, like across the street from Jekyll and Hyde? There's some of those deluxe, is that one of the ones that's depicted up there? Does anybody know? CJ, do you know? I mean, that's a pretty good-looking...
Yeah, so the top left is the deluxe acorn there. That's the one that's in that area.
Okay.
The one on the right-hand side is the one by the fountain. The fountains, what's the one on, yeah, Northeast Park?
Fountain's a complex, yeah, apartment complex.
One thing to point out that you were probably getting to, but I'm sorry to break in. This also kind of fits in a little bit with what we're talking about, is moving to LEDs, trying to get a little bit greener, save energy, reduce our carbon footprint. So this is one way we might be able to reach both of those goals with one project.
Do any of the LEDs simulate like a gas lamp? Can you get the flicker?
They do make some... All the ones I've seen are residential in nature and really aren't very good.
I think that would look really nice.
It's pretty easy to tell they're not real.
Around Town Hall, but it may be cost prohibitive or not very practical, I don't know.
But we can look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we also think this would fit in well with the Sustainability Plan that was also being... That our... The intern, Tom. Thank you, Tom, again. So we're hoping as when he's finishing up that project, that we can, you know, tie these two things together, the LED lighting along with the sustainability project. Are there any other questions from the board about any of these proposals or have ideas?
Thank you. You've mentioned a cement block wall on town green on the... Replacing the wood. Did you mean retaining wall blocks or cement retaining wall blocks?
Correct, retaining wall blocks. Are you familiar with the one down there by Public Parking? On the right-hand side, I think they put in about a year ago.
Yeah, but not just basic?
No, no.
Cinder block or cement block?
No.
With stucco or a brick and stick or something?
Retaining wall block.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Urban?
Just one housekeeping item here. I don't know how many commissioners may have been contacted by the press this morning with regards to this comment. The mayor asked me to follow up with them, and I did. The question was about the RNC and doing this, and I said, well, lest you remember, we did the same thing for the DNC, so we're equal opportunity tourism-funded people. So that made them very happy, and they went away. So that's taken care of from that aspect of it. I told them that we did it for DNC, we're doing it for the RNC, and it's all copacetic. So that takes care of that. Are we, with the end goal in mind, what are we... Each of these projects is going to have a different timeframe to it. So I guess my question is, is what's the end goal? What's the drop-dead date? How do we work backwards? How do we make these selections? Because I think that you've got a combination of doing some projects that are good, bang for the buck. Going to make a big impression, but they're going to be temporary in nature. And then some of these projects have a longer lasting value and how you balance that. So I don't know that coming back on the 26th, are you intending to do this as a 5:30 meeting? To try and triage this a little bit further? Because I... To carry on, I mean, I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of questions. I mean, I didn't hear anything about extending the 100-block planters, the icon of this town, the planters and the hanging baskets, that's huge. We've... Jay and company developed an intervention at Trade and Matthews Street up here with the plantings and the park benches and all, which is a highly visible intersection of town. That wasn't mentioned. And then I could go on about the other things we've talked about. So I'm wondering, where can we fit in a deeper dive to look at dollars and cents, bang for the buck, long-lasting longevity, et cetera?
Those are great questions. That's one of the intentions of this meeting. You know, we have the mobility study. What we got is a couple things going on at one time, so we don't have a clear vision on hardscapes and what are we going to do on the, let's say, 100, 200 block of North Trade Street. I do know we've talked about expanding the planters. I do think that's probably something we could work in, easily work into this plan. I, you know, I mean, how far are we from finishing the mobility plan? And the consulting work?
We're looking at November, I believe, is the target of the mobility study. I think probably March for the actual streetscape plan, because they're using the recommendations from the mobility study. The guy who sold how wide the sidewalks were to be, and designed those. So, yeah, we're pretty... That would put us really too close to the RNC way for those results.
And obviously, to get in the greenery, we need to be... We need to come up with a plan for that and put that in, whatever, this fall, so it can settle in and grow.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've got to have to break this into different types of projects. You've got hardscape projects, softscape projects, infrastructure-type projects, how they all lay out, and kind of some forethought, because I like the idea of the retaining wall out here, but someday there's going to be a street edge there. I don't know when, but there'll be a street edge there. So maybe you want to think about, is that incorporate something? Does it incorporate a sidewalk? Does it incorporate, for lack of a better word, our own version of Spanish steps? Where there are steps built into that wall where people can sit and watch people go by, et cetera, and engage? So there's a lot going on here. I'm more than happy to roll my sleeves up and help out, but I just think it's going to take a deeper dive very, very fast.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Commissioner Urban, thank you for identifying those other projects as well. If I can just tack on, if it wasn't already mentioned, would be the pedestrian crossing at Matthews Station Street. We have two crossings there. We've talked about increased lighting. We've talked about a number of options. I think any one of those options should be added to this list as well.
Yeah, one other comment that I brought up in the past, but I think it's time to reconsider is these flowers that are self-watering. Because at some point, if we have so many, it's going to be, you know, maybe cost-effective to get plants that water themselves instead of having have them watered every morning. I go by and smile every day when I... When I see them being watered, but that's a lot of manual labor. Maybe we can get plants that have a drip irrigation system or something like that on them.
So just to add on, I think what we're doing now is just bringing up some of the ideas we're looking at. We started off with rough, just a number we threw out, $200,000 to do some things. This is going to be way more than that. So another thing to be thinking about is how much does a board want to spend? We get roughly a million and a half, I think, in tourism funds. We have to confer with the attorney and make sure that all these would be eligible. But just, you know, keep this in the back of your mind and start asking us questions, please, as... Over the next few weeks, so we can try to get this down to a plan by the time we bring it back to you.
You've got a lot of work to do, Charlie. You need to go through the list and check it all.
All right, any other comments or questions regarding this item?
Polish my ring.
All right, let's move on to item 14, new business. Adopt preliminary assessment resolution and set public hearing for special assessment for... I'm not sure how you say that. Acacia Street, Cochran Woods Lane, Jerry Lane, and Lightwood Drive, all located in the Streamside subdivision. Who's doing this? CJ. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and commissioners. Please forgive me, I had a few minutes during our meeting to put together a slideshow, so I'm putting that, or Jay's putting that in the computer for us. Yeah, thank you. All right, I think everybody here is familiar with the subdivision. It's a Streamside subdivision, developed around 2008. The developer backed out. The residents came and petitioned the board in April to do a special assessment, pay for the repairs, so that we could take over the subdivision. Based on the public hearing comments they heard then, they withdrew their petition. And again, this is the subdivision here with Lightwood, Acacia, Cochran Woods, and Jerry Lane. 16 lots with 14 homeowners. They've brought back a new petition, signed by 11 of the 14 landowners, which represent 11 of the 16 lots. They're asking to be assessed 79% of the cost of the improvements. And what that is, that's based... Colors aren't showing up really well. What that's based on is this portion of their subdivision is really used by everyone. It's not just the neighborhood. The parts in red over here are solely by the neighborhood. So this represents 79% of the asphalt versus 21% of the asphalt that you use by the public. That's how that number was come up with or was derived. Using the contractor, the bid that we received, the estimated cost at this percentage is $18,500 to the town and $69,000 to the subdivision, which is $43,000, I'm sorry, $4,300 per lot. If we brought it in town, did most of it with town forces, we actually can bring that down and roughly $13,000 cost to the town and $49,000 cost to subdivision. We would reimburse ourselves from the special assessment for the time and materials and equipment that we'd use for that work. And that would bring down the cost to the residents to roughly $3,000 per lot. That's where we are included with the memo is a petition to move forward and to set a public hearing date.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. From Commissioner Melton?
Motion to adopt the attached preliminary assessment resolution and set a public hearing date for September 9th, 2019, as outlined in CJ's memo to us dated October 5th, 2019.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Melton. Thank you, Chris, and seconded by Commissioner Urban. Any discussion? Commissioner Query?
What is the total cost? Which one did you choose? I just missed that.
Total cost?
That's not pertinent tonight.
Okay.
That will come when the project has been completed, when you get to total cost. These are estimates, but again, we'll have a public hearing, and which way to go will come out at that public hearing.
CJ, are you comfortable with town forces doing it?
I am.
Okay.
That's the way to say it. Property owners and the town the most money.
That's what I'd get received.
All right, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Let me add a little story to this. A good field story. One of the property owners was out of town when they resubmitted the petition, and they came back in today and signed that petition. So the neighborhood is really in favor of this. So I just share that even as late as today, someone added their name to the petition. That's essentially correct, and it's... correct, isn't it, CJ?
Yes, it is.
All right, we're, we're gonna go into closed session with just the board and some town staff, but I would like to mention, for those still in the audience, that there's a Stevens Creek subarea study feedback form in the back. So, so please take one on your way out. It's also on our website. And we'll take a five-minute recess and then go into closed session.
Well, we'll do that when we come back to make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, five-minute recess. I had to do it.
Yeah.
You don't get to bang that gavel.